We can begin the policy and curriculum committee meeting for September fifteenth. We have a item on curriculum side, and then we have some policies to consider for revision or new policies to consider, and we can begin with curriculum with the federal program update.
Mr. Piles joining us this evening because he's this year has taken on the responsibility of managing our federal programs, our titles one through four. And as we annually do give an update on what we are using the funding for, where it applies. I'm just going to leave this conversation again. At first I just want to say thank you because it's a lot to, you know, come in spring and say, we're gonna need your help managing this. I mean, we try to keep it simple and not change too much this year, obviously, as you're first year doing it, but still a lot of work and appreciate your time in the spring, summer, and right up until today, man.
Yeah, no problem. I mean, learning a lot, I think, as I go, I'll get better at this, but already it's been interesting just to go through the process and understand it a little better and yeah, I look forward to working with them with where this money will be going to. So, um, yeah, so if we can go to the first slide, and just so you know too, we had a stakeholder meeting with parents from KES, teachers, administrators on August twenty first. Submitted the grant the second. Normally that's on the first, but there's a window because of just with everything that happened, but it's getting held. It's actually, I think you can submit it by the thirtieth. But we had pretty much everything done. Sent it in, so just to go over this, you're probably aware of where these funds need be allocated towards Title One's improving student achievement. And again, these are mostly our most needy students that need this and that support. Title two is teacher and principal training, you know, pretty easy just to think of professional development. Title three is the English language learners. So all that money for that was there, and then title four is support and academic enrichment. And we'll go more into this as we go on. So again, Title One is improving basic programs, increasing student achievement literacy math, and providing opportunities for students who need the support. So this kind of shows how and who's eligible for this. So the first thing is we get our low income data, our free and reduced lunch count. You know, I think we're always challenged to try to figure out how we can get more families to fill out that paperwork and data to get a better idea. So that's something that we're working towards to get better better numbers for us. The next you'll see is ranking of schools by percentage of the low income students. So there's a forty percent threshold here. So you'll see the one school cuts down is forty four point five three percent. That is the school that's eligible. The high school's forty one point six. So again, they're eligible, but as a district, we make the decision that even though they're eligible, we don't count them in terms of this. And then thirty nine is middle school. I believe you can put in a waiver for that, but again, we've just always put this money towards our elementary schools, and then you can see Greenwich is actually thirty two point nine percent. So and I think we've had conversations about how, again, how we move people around. I mean, we could probably manipulate this, knowing that you move how many kids up to Greenwich, and those students are free to reduce lunch. I mean, essentially.
Yeah, we're not suggesting we it's that point is more just about some of the or percentage is a poor statistic oftentimes. So if you think of Greenwich Elementary School, you know, if we're two point two students is about a percent, you know, so in any given enrollment year, you could we could flip flop between being eligible and not eligible this year, which is based off of last year's number at thirty two point nine. You know, if we had a kindergarten class that happened to lean a little heavily come in that way, a little heavily towards economically disadvantaged, it could shift us in one year. Percentages just are often not great numbers, but that's what is used for tail eligibility and we're bound on.
Does the amount of funds change?
No, our funding would be funding is, yeah, when we were school wide in both KES and Greenwich, it was approximately the same funding with the exception of, you know, small end of the
Yeah, and we were grandfathered, Greenwich was grandfathered in last year, but you can only be grandfathered in one year, not everybody. So that's, that's where you'll see all the funding this year will be going to.
And our trend for the last ten years has been a slow, and there's sometimes it bounces back, but it's been that Greenwich has lower percentage of economically disadvantaged students in KES has a higher percentage. That's been a trend for ten years.
Go to the next slide. So then that just shows you who doesn't qualify this year and then who does qualify. So all the funding will be going to Costanza Elementary School for the twenty five. And then when we jump into exactly where these funds are going.
One other question. Those are pretty much in, you combine those two schools and they still are.
Yeah, maybe you can run those numbers pretty quick. As quick as I was thinking, give me two minutes.
So I could jump that.
Yeah.
Title one we're spending towards. So we have a total of two hundred and eighty nine thousand nine hundred and seventy two dollars. Most of that is going towards our reading specialists and our MTSS person or what I would call like our intervention specialist teacher. So most of that is in salary and their benefits. We also spend fifteen thousand five hundred for our K reading intern who's at Costanza. Now, normally we would have two of those positions. So that's where we allocated thirteen thousand five hundred for a title one coordinator, which to me, that's not added onto my salary. That's pulled in from my salary of the time and effort spent towards that. That seemed to make the most sense of. Again, we could have put it towards like a paraprofessional, an MTSS paraprofessional. And again, it's, it's all just pulled from different buckets to pay people, but I think in terms of talking to the fan, just it's cleaner just to pull it from mine rather than a professional. So we also have two thousand for Paul camps. That obviously doesn't count cover all the savings, but that takes a little chunk out of that. Parent involvement, again, through Title One, you need to have parent involvement. So usually one a trimester. So Costanza Elementary School will be able to use that. And then we always do four hundred dollars. Actually, each bill gets a hundred dollars for homeless. Those schools. For family. Usually we get.
The combined percentage for this year for the elementary schools is forty point zero one percent. So we're right on the right on the fringe there.
That could, that could easily change with one or two students.
Yes. Yeah, that would put us, you know, every year right on that. Spectrum.
And I think like when we were talking to some of the families, like PTOs of both, like we stress the importance of, even though a lot of families don't think that they could you know, fill out that paperwork. You still, you know, you might not think that you qualify, but doing that process is super helpful because of, like you said, get a couple more. That percentage changes. So that's Title One. Title Two, we have forty three thousand six hundred ninety nine dollars, and this goes towards class size reductions. So this pays for a portion of a KES first grade teacher salary. Title Three, we're, we work with Fleetwood for this. So the goals are, you know, improving we as schools and improve student attendance. This is for English language learners.
Based off enrollment, if you qualify for less than ten thousand dollars, you can, you can apply in consortium with another district. So we've done a raise Fleetwood for the last seven.
And if you go down, it's for professional development, two thousand dollars. Supplies and resources, three thousand. Again, engagement, five hundred ninety five. So again, there's not a lot of money there that we get, but it's something. Is that our money or is that why you split?
That's our, that's our money. That's our money. Yes. They have their own, they're two independent budgets within one larger budget.
And then moving to Title Four, again, you can target these areas well rounded education cell safety and healthy schools and effective technologies, or it can be transferred into Title One. Due to the fact that we utilize a lot of this money towards salaries and benefits, we did move the twenty one thousand eight hundred sixty four dollars to Title One, which will then give KES twenty thousand dollars to use for supplies. And again, these can't be utilized as core curriculum. It has to be support. That's obviously one of the biggest things that I've learned is, you know, supplement, not some plan. And again, a lot of people are like, you know, you're in charge of this and your school's not even involved in it, but I also think through Deb and I working together already, I mean, she pretty much comes to me and like, hey, can I get this for this? And it's yes, you can, or no, actually, we can't use this because of this is a core curriculum piece. We have to use that supplemental. So, you know, things that we've used, I think a lot of the initiatives in terms of, we were talking about math and reading, but using decodable books. When, you know, we have, I know KES and GES has data meetings this week, so that's when we really drill down into what students need and get them what they need inside that small group setting. That's a big push that most schools are doing this year is. Yeah. I think we're transitioning from the spending a lot of time talking one to one with students rather than identifying a like need for a group of kids that we can sit and we can be super intentional and direct with our instruction and get more bang for a buck in the small group setting. So a lot of these funds that we have through Title One allows us the accessibility through programs and materials that will support those needy kids that hopefully are going through the MTS process. We'd like to have them go through that, get those interventions for a period of time and be successful that then we can start focusing on other students and putting them back into the regular classroom. So and then cost camp. Some money there for some supplies as well. So overall, you know, big things, Costanza Elementary will be getting all the funding through Title One. Our focus is staffing, instruction, student support, and these funds help reduce class sizes, provided intervention and support to student success. Questions?
So this, this bucket of funding, we have, you know, we have so many different timelines that we monitor, manage, and when you, when discussions are in the news about the federal budget, the congressional budget that is, I mean, currently they're working under a temporary extension through September thirtieth, but there's been talk about a half year budget or a full year budget. The budget that gets adopted now, the federal level will impact these numbers for the next year. It's a, it's a year behind. So we are anticipating a likely, you know, reduction in those. We won't know that until the budget is passed, but that is, that's definitely something we're monitoring. We look at projections for the twenty six, twenty seven school year in, for our revenue side.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, moving forward, if, if there's any ideas of what else we can utilize this money towards, obviously it has to fall under certain criteria, but you know, essentially that's the whole idea of getting stakeholders involved and I, I think we're with where we are as a district, these funds do help. You know, we don't get a lot of federal funding, but what we do, I think, you know, I always look at it as these people's money. Need to be intentional and make sure that we're spending it appropriately. We're not just throwing it around. I'm not saying that we did, but I just think any ideas of how we can do it better with this, let us know. And like I said, I'm learning, learning a lot, but any feedback is much appreciated.
I definitely appreciate your intention and ability and, you know, process and getting to where you guys have gotten and so thank you.
Well, I think the only thing that next time I'll definitely, I think I dropped the ball. I should have invited a couple of you probably to the stakeholder meetings, so I apologize for that, but I did. You know, Christian was like, you know, need to come here and again, want to be transparent, show exactly where the money's going. And I do think there is potentially a time in the middle of the year where money can change, where we get more or less, but again, it'll all fall under that, and I would imagine it will probably go under the supplies piece unless we're a little different.
It's not, it would not be a significant change.
No, no, I mean, I already in the summer, it increased a little bit, but it was just a couple hundred bucks. So.
The Paul support money would have been for this past summer. Yes, yeah, yeah. Which, but it's all versus, it's not just KES. That's correct.
Thanks so much, Mr. Piles.
Thank you.
And that can move us into some policy. We have two new policies to consider, and the first one on the agenda is eight ten point one, school bus drivers and school commercial motor vehicle drivers.
Yes, these two policies are linked in a way. One deals with school bus drivers, the other one will deal with slightly vans, or our van, the second one, eight ten point three. So vans are, most of the vans that we have are ten passengers or less. There are nine seats and a driver. So those, those vehicles fall under eight ten point three. School buses themselves would fall under eight ten point one. Reason I'm bringing them up together is the fact that PSBA has recommended both of these policies, even though we are linked with BCIU, eight ten point one would be relevant for us. So there is a piece about in both of these alcohol awareness program. There is a piece about reporting if a driver would be arrested for violation. They would have to report that within thirty days. We have checked off seventy two hours, which matches some of our other policies. Thirty days is a long time to create that report. Goes along with that. So.
Seventy two hours is the standard for teachers, your sort of personnel.
The other option is bet the next business day, which may be a little bit difficult under some circumstances. So it seems like the seventy two hour teachers and that policy makes a lot of sense. So it also does mention contracted carriers, which we which matches our situation. Then if a driver was convicted, they would have to report that to us within fifteen days. So currently, like I said, we do not have a policy that covers these items. I'll say we don't have one specifically that covers for school bus drivers, you know, previous drivers would have followed. We have employee policies, and we also have contract with service personnel policies, but not one specific to school bus drivers. It is the PSBA recommendation to have a specific school bus.
BP I U also have their own policies and is there a wall?
Yes. Of course, would work with, make sure that everything in the policy is covered. Just as a general practice with BCIU, because they work with multiple different school districts with everybody under theirs, our policy would supersede theirs in terms of contracted supervisor or contracted drivers that work for us. If it didn't align with them, they can move somebody to another district. There's no conflict, but there are no current. There.
Does it change anything that was?
No, I mean, there is a clause in there. We have to get copy of policy, signature that someone was giving the policy, things of that nature, but there's nothing of substance that will change on day one. It's more about ensuring that we have the training requirements in place, that there are reporting requirements in place. I'm pleased to see and hear about the texting and the cellphone usage. Do we have, because I don't know the state law, not that they can't use that. However, if they're using like Google Maps or something, because they don't know where they're going, do we have holders in all these vans so they can put their cellphone on them? Maybe we should really look at that. I don't know if that's for here for facilities, but I mean, it makes sense. It's coming up here. It's something that it's just common sense. Because we, we put them in our work trucks now and, you know, it's, it's something I think it's, I mean, you can pick them up off the hamsa for like fifty bucks. You know, cheap, the nice ones that fit like every size phone out there. Just something that, you know, probably should think about. Thank you.
I have, mine is like, like call it a pop it. It's a magnet. So you put a magnet on your phone, you have the magnet and it magnetizes rather than having to.
Yeah, but this would allow anybody, because like this is a metal case, you know, but this would allow anybody to put any phone on in there. They don't have to have like a specific magnet or anything. It's just, you know, it screws into the dashboard and then it just adjusts whatever size phone you have. So that'd probably be an easier solution than getting magnets for everybody.
That, I think I'd be looking for a motion in a second for suggested items that are discussed and highlighted within the policy. All in favor? That's the board. That then brings eight ten point three.
Yeah, once again, you know, the difference is it would be a ten passenger van or vehicle or less. In our case, most of the time, that would be a van rather than any other type of vehicle. Lot of the lot of the wording is the same as the eight ten point one, the seventy two hours to report and the fifteen days to report eviction. Those are both included in here. Once again, supplying this policy and making sure people understand the reason why. So that is a big piece.
Forty is basically, the whole thing is basically the same.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, like I said, for us to major delineation as a school van versus school bus. Pretty standard as far as those vehicles. Some school districts have many different types of vehicles, but for us, it's only a school van.
Good questions and comments on this one. Be looking for the same emotion in a second to move this point to the board as is here. The suggestions here.
Make the motion.
All in favor, say aye. That's the board. And then that brings us to section B policies to consider for revision. The first one is eight twenty seven conflict of interest.
Yes, number one throughout the term board member has been replaced with school director. It's something that changing a lot of our policies based on KSPA recommendation. Then the definition of conflict of interest as it relates to federal requirements has been included on the first page. And then a provision of written notice to employees and protection for reporting violations related to a conflict of interest. Being the other major piece to this policy as far as changes.
Question that concerns, three twenty seven. Question, that concerns, three twenty seven. Motion in a second. Three twenty seven, move the full board.
Same.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Eight twenty seven moves to the full board. Brings us to policy one zero three.
Yes, one zero three discrimination and title title nine sectional harassment affecting students. We also have one as far as employees, but one or three deals with students. The Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, we had dealt with that earlier over the summer, a couple of policies. That discuss the amendments to Pennsylvania Human Relations Act. Regarding religious creed regarding the definition of pregnancy and. Detective classification issues, so you can see on page. Three, it talks about race and religious creed. Right above it, I'm sorry, page three, right above race helps with that. First definitions. There is a section about discipline and placement of a student convicted or adjudicated with sexual assault. As far as the district complying with. Reportments established by state law and work policy, that's a piece that's been added. Then there's a piece about the title nine coordinator, assisting with the director of special education. Ensure I P section five before service agreements are followed. Then there are also various attachments regarding. Procedures and processes for complaints, report form. I would say minor revision, the overall those those forms that we already have.
The words like the definitions are bold. Are these previously undefined? Are they?
Some of the definitions change. Yeah, some of the, if it's determined self, it it's simply bolded. If it is entire entire piece. So in this particular policy complaint, that was already there. So the the word itself is bolded. The the other pieces, it's been a total total redo as far as language, so. For example, pregnancy, that that's a definition that was not there before written in that manner. Same same with race. Now, that could that could mean also at times. Didn't exist at all. That whole entire piece is bad.
And so where do we get the definitions from?
School code, also public law, which goes at the end of the course. So if you look at the preferences, there are thirty four, thirty five. Anything, anything with a with a source or a citation afterwards, it shows that it's it's public laws, of course. Where it comes from, sometimes, shouldn't say that in every case. Sometimes it's dealing with other policies, so it can link to another policy that we already have. In that case, that policy would like. Would like to evolve. So those those definitions do come to us.
They're both P A code.
But page eight, you can see, you can see where the P A code items are versus where some of the policies are cited.
Yeah, but some of the numbers don't match up perfectly on there.
Yeah, and that that's possible only because it's. Yeah.
Just as far as the numbers down there, but the links match up, that's you want to use the link says the reference until.
Click on thirty four right next to pregnancy.
Yeah, yes.
Exact definition.
From P A code.
In the P A code.
When these are finalized, the P S P A makes sure, make sure that all the citations are accurate. Numbers accurate on the two.
In your opinion, what does the state or what does it mean? The use of assisted reproductive technology, like I just feel like that's really vague and weird sounding. So like, I'm not understanding what it means. And pregnancy.
Yeah, and again, that comes from the P A Human Relations Act.
What what do they mean by idea? Okay.
Expansion of a definition, but if it's P A codes. Don't always understand how they apply in a school setting, but again.
Yeah, and this came up in the other policy dealing with. You know, a student who could be pregnant, it's really the definition safeguards them as far as services. And it also safeguards them as far as supporting them academically and beyond. So, yeah, scenarios and so forth.
Yeah.
Not so sure, but.
This is just to cover everything.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can move one or three to the full board and I think this to one of three point one. Non discrimination upon students with disabilities.
So there have been some changes made as far as handling reports of discrimination. The language related to safety and security reporting, which we've had at many, many different policies over the last year or so. Uh, legal citations have been updated, also reporting law enforcement and P P E, which once again, we've had a lot of policies over. Mention of title nine coordinator. Title nine coordinator's responsibilities. Some of the language is the same as policy one, one or three as far as the definitions.
All the definitions, and we're not specific to established systems. They were sustained.
Three point one.
This angle, if you look at definition of harassment, you can see words bolded is their language versus. Young bolded is what it was before. So those are anytime you see a definition, if it's just, if it's just the terms such as discrimination, your own religious creed is already there. The the bolded pieces is what's been added by P S P A, usually by. By law, legal definitions.
Second, move one or three to point one to the full board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. One oh three point one. And time wise, yeah, ten minutes, we can go to policy one oh four.
Just realized that a couple of things I said that weren't making sense, I was actually looking at.
Just during the last.
Just had reversed some of the language, so sorry about that.
Specifically the ref.
Yeah, the definitions, I was referring, I was looking through the wrong policy, so I apologize for that. So, yeah, so this is the one, this is the one as far as the definitions. Better land coordinator and so forth of those definitions. Being updated and so forth.
Second. All in favor, say aye. One oh four moves to the full board, and then that brings us to one or two academic standards.
Yeah, so there there are some changes as far as. P P E and what we're looking at as far as academic standards. Little bit of an extension of English Language Arts to include reading, writing, speaking, listening. We get into the steel standards, not only for grade six through twelve, but also grades. Eight through five, so delineating delineating the difference between grade levels. Beyond that, there are no changes.
Basically, this policy is just telling the state that we're going to promise to educate the kids.
Yes, yeah, that's correct. There there has been, I'd say the biggest thing, the extension of grades K through five. Some of the areas that are now.
We've been talking about steals for a couple of years now, but the end of this school year is when for the patient system. A little change varies by grade, some, not a lot of change, some.
What that looks at, you don't mention, what it looks like classroom teachers along with with computers, we have media. Library, things we do, things we do through, currently married, we're learning. John, that's where I put it, especially in classes, it kind of reinforces what we do at the classroom level.
Quick motion move, revise policy. Second, all in favor. Well, it brings us. Actually covered everything, it's been a while.
Has it ever happened?
Not sure, I don't think so. All in favor of journeying, say aye.
I wanted to address something.
Go ahead.
I want to open a can of worms. I know, I know.
Told you, one of my.
One of my, I would like us to look into getting rid of Zoom. Except I understand we need it for directors if they're not around. But in talking to the J O C directors for the other sixteen school districts. I believe Antietam is the only one that still does Zoom.
Zoom for.
For public.
Yeah, public participation.
Yeah, for public participation, I think it's a pain for Ed to try to like add one more step. And I don't know, I personally don't like it. And I think it's unnecessary and we don't have the. The there's little to no engagement and it's just one more thing. So anyway, that's just my opinion. Soon for public engagement, but you know.
What were the statistics on that?
Antietam is the only other school district.
Still allows participation.
Everybody else just.
For again, for community members.
Did Redding do it there still?
They were in the room when I asked the question, so I think you know. Sockman asked me and I just been struck for the meeting the next day.
Makes sense to me, it seems like a COVID leftover.
Right, it's like.
We.
I mean, that's, that is when it became regular, of course. And when we were first returning, you know, everything was pretty much back to normal in person, everything. Um, the idea was floated to stop zooming. And the public reaction was quite negative to that and. People felt like we were trying to be less transparent or trying to, you know, be more secretive and make it more difficult for people to be involved. So.
Pardon some. Of them, I have an interview.
Well, you know, there there's a few extra steps, it's been a while since anyone has signed up to speak. I can't remember the last time we have. We do, we're the exact opposite, we do everything possible to allow people to speak, so. There's a possibility people raise their hands at times, uh, they go on chat, they mentioned that you want to speak, we, we've allowed that. So even though they haven't signed up through the signup sheet, we still go through those steps, so. I don't think we've ever missed someone, there's a couple of settings, there's a setting with the chat. I have communicated by accident just to the panelists before, rather than opening up to you. To the others, and then I realize to do it, and everybody, we, we don't allow people on Zoom to communicate with each other.
Right.
But they can communicate with me. So, like I said, our, our seizure of the last five years has been to make sure people are included. Yeah, and like I said, there, there are some steps to it, but, um, my personal feeling is. If there were people who were participating through Zoom, and for good reason. Be a consideration, but I, again, I don't, I don't remember the last time someone has participated through Zoom, or have a speech.
Yeah, that's been a little while, but meetings have been relatively. Center for recently for their, you know. Only staff audience at the moment.
There is no added cost.
There, there's a webinar, there's a webinar cost, but we would keep that anyway in order to broadcast through YouTube.
Right, because it's not, the, the broadcast time, so.
Right, right, the recording won't stop, the broadcast won't stop, Zoom is a simple way to do it, so there is a, there is a. Annual cost for the Zoom account and for the webinars, and I think last year. I mean, we could look at other avenues to record hosts. But we would have to keep it due to board policy with what Johnny. So, yes, because, because board members could join through Zoom. Same cause, same setup.
There is no, the policy, our public participation of ordinance policy doesn't say. Anything about it, you know, it just became practice, and there was discussion of whether we continue to practice and decision to tell them to continue. But there is no policy stating we do and we don't. You know, so ultimately. You know, whether or not we would change that many of the staff, that's Mr. Man, who's what his advice would be, should, would it be a formal action? You know, if we did. Policy to state that we would, would not, because right now it's just something we started doing and it's not.
I mean, and again, that's just me, like, I just, I don't like the idea. These floaters out there just watching our meetings, and like, I don't know, to me, it's just a little bit semi creepy, like, if you can't come to a meeting and sit here. And talk to me in person, but you can be out there in the stratosphere, watching us and watching our every move, because you're just sitting in your home. That's, to me.
Now, the YouTube piece, you would have to decide whether going, going to live stream it. Because that, that live stream would do the same thing, minus the participation piece, or we recorded, saved it, then uploaded it. But same thing, it's a recording, so I don't know how much difference it really is in the end.
I think we have the technology, we can increase availability and be all that more. Doesn't seem that, well, it's not possibly beyond what the district would spend anyway, and.
Yeah, I mean, so at this point, I think Soffin raised the question, I would like to at least ask Mr. Man, who's, how he would advise us to. To, if we were gonna make a change, make a decision, like you say, um, would he advise whether it's through policy or just through action? And then I can add, next week, I can even update on his advice is on what we should do as next steps.
I think the caveat, one more point, as I mentioned, steps that are thinking, we, we done our best with, and I think we've done well. But, um, you know, just, just that expectation that we were ever to miss that piece because of. Technology glitches, or why would miss something, if that became an issue, that's. That, that's one of the advantages to, to not allowing participation piece for Zoom.
I'll also just throw in this, through frequency of meetings, we are with or without. The ability to participate, using the most accessible board in this county, no one has more meetings than. That's not a criticism to anybody, I'm just saying, we are already, without, without public participation via Zoom, we are still the most accessible group.
And I will say one thing that would be in favor of not live streaming. Like back when we were basically all in person. We would move between buildings. And, you know, that gave everybody the opportunity to see all the different buildings, and obviously. You know, me coming to a meeting in purpose, in person, that was nearer to your, like, home elementary school. Awesome, and so that was. Was, it's just not feasible for this setup to be floating between building, building. I know it can be done.
I will say the difficult thing has always been the microphones, not difficult, but hard work. So without there was all the microphones set up, it's a lot less work.
Yeah. Or these, we just have a meeting under P C T C.
Yeah. I think that also sets up like a nice timeline for decision, because we would, if we were going to, you know, move meetings around again, we would. Put that in the schedule, the, you know, we're being scheduled in December for the following year, so, um, kind of sets everything up to align. The next couple of months, because December is coming.
Well, with that, I guess we should have an official roll call, all in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye. Meeting adjourned.
Hi, Ed, can you hear me?
Not quite as that, there was one, a similar situation in the first one, Rick County, and it was, uh. The little man that lives in the office.
Thank you.
Ziegler, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, um, I'd like to call tonight's, uh, committee meeting for the facility's extracurricular to order. And first on the agenda under extracurricular is the update on activities. And so, the brief update here, uh, first couple of, couple of weeks into it. Things have been going pretty smoothly, had a couple of questions, uh, come up naturally from anything new being introduced into the district, but, uh. Once we got some more communication out, uh, to start to understand the process and. Uh, the, the online payment system was, was new to a lot of people this year, but I think. Uh, a lot of the questions came from just the setup of it, again, once people realized, kind of like the à la carte function of it, along with. The, uh, technology insurance fees and everything there, um, they became, that understanding previously, pretty quickly, uh, so we have. Right now. Total fees collected so far this year, eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And kind of breaking them down by grade, we had fifteen sixth graders, forty five seventh graders, forty eight graders. At forty one ninth graders, thirty two tenth graders. Thirty seven eleventh graders and thirty nine and twelfth graders, went pay the fee, uh, some of them, we, we noticed that, uh. We do have a couple, about half a dozen that did double pay, the fifty dollar and the hundred dollar fee, but we will be going back and. Marking that, reconciling that issue and some refunds there, uh, new round, uh, free reduced lunch information is gonna be coming out by October first, so. Those will be updated as well, so if there's anybody that did previously pay the fee, and is now. Qualifies for free reduced lunch, we will also cross check that, issue some refunds there, but all in all, I feel like it's been a, a pretty, pretty good rollout. For, for this year.
I think you shared too, like, uh, with me, what percentage, do you have the percentage that had used the online payment? Where's Mr. Hoffman?
It may have been a Mr. Hoffman.
A very, a very high percentage used online payment, uh, so that convenience definitely is worthwhile, worth, worth the time it's put into it from our. Tech team and like, but it's an activities office, so very high percentage.
Yeah, that was, we've had some people come in and pay in person, but overwhelmingly, it's been online.
Is there some way moving forward, like, not for this year, but for like next year? Like, because some kids don't participate in any sports, but yet they have that athletic fee on there, and it's gonna be there for the whole entire year. And I've spoken to a few parents who feel that they're gonna be trapped in the pain that. Because they're not gonna get, like, their kids aren't gonna, like, get their diploma or something like that, and I told them before that, that's not gonna happen, but. There's that fear out there, so is there a way that we can maybe take that off until they, because we know who's signing up for the sports. We should be able to bill those, those parents and students for that sport. And most of it is during the fall anyways.
Right, I, I would think for, for the school year, I think overwhelmingly, we'll see the, the largest number of payments done right at the beginning of the year.
There, I mean, we had both options, obviously, one's a little bit more labor intensive than the other to go upload, you know, the students are participating, and what. You know, it was a debate, which way we should go, and kind of what pushed us over the edge was that the technology fee. Was the first fee listed in there, the, which is a completely optional tech insurance fee, and. We wanted that to be available to everybody as an option, so once that wasn't gonna be available as an option, it just kind of made sense to go all of it with various options. Um, but we certainly could evaluate it for next year, and look, look a different way, the other piece was that, you know, we figure in the end. Seventy five percent, just throwing that number out there, our students are going to participate in something, you know, it's, it's a high, high number to do. Um, you know, so, again, there's definitely a question we picked ourselves, and probably almost every. Outside of like true, just like tech issues of where do I click here, do I need the Spanish account, almost every phone call, email, we, we feel of someone who was pressured with that exact. Question, you know, or some version of it, um, it says, because it says, oh, right, like, it says, uh, balance due, was I guess the methodology of it. And, uh, once we explained it, it wasn't actually due. You know, how, how much more challenging is it to just initiate the fee to whatever? I guess, another, another part of that conversation was, if somebody was, this would be for the high school, if somebody was participating in the activity. But they're not in a sport until the winter or the spring, they usually just wanted to pay upfront, you know, so they were able to do that. But they knew that was coming versus paying one now. They would, they wouldn't caught the initial list when we would upload the, uh, rosters, so, just, there's some pros and cons. Right, definitely value it.
The eighteen thousand that you quoted, is that strictly activity fee, or was, is that inclusive of the insurance that we collect?
No, that is just the.
That's strictly activity. Then we just put that into the general fund, it's not like earmarked by activity.
And we still, this, we're still at a point of the school year right now, where a lot of our student activity groups are still kind of figuring out their rosters, kids don't. Have the ability to sign up, so those rosters are still pretty fluid right now, so, um, kids that. Aren't participating in athletics, that would only pay that non-athletic, non-athletic activity fee, there's still a handful of them that. Still unpaid yet, but again, the rosters are still very fluid right now, could be that by October, could be able to solidify that, get a better idea. Who's definitely participating one.
Do we have any numbers on who said that they couldn't pay, and if they're, like, how assistance was provided?
Don't have any numbers, it's, it's just been any kind of outreach that we've gotten, which is probably free reduced lunch.
Okay, there's those two, so any individual that maybe had issue, that's just kind of been individually, like, they reached out and. And maybe that they're having a hardship, and we tried to connect them with, I don't even know if that's happened.
Yeah, okay, I mean, that's what we have, we asked. Teachers and staff that, you know, they kind of, and here to the ground, where I heard somebody talking about it, because, you know, we, obviously, if someone came to us, we'd have some. Evidence to connect them with, or just to do it for them, um, you know, but the fear was more that the unspoken. Need that would come up, so we asked our staff to let us know.
And I guess we're not gonna really know numbers until like the end of the, maybe first half of the school year, until we have a good idea of like, if it affected fall sports signup or anything like that.
Without having exact numbers, I mean, I can tell. Our girls soccer team, their numbers are up, we have a full JV team this year, boys soccer's always been strong enough, but their, their football numbers are up. Last year, so I think just not having an exact number to quote, it does seem like our, overall, our athletic participation numbers seem to have increased this year.
Okay. And coupled that with. Involvement is down ten students at the high school, uh, you know, so we, so. That would impact it obviously too, like, I heard that lower number in tenth grade, but we only have eighty nine students, so we're going down. And, uh, that point will have, the, the high school will be, I think, lowest enrolled it's been in the last seven or eight years, next year. Eighth grade, because it's eighth grade is small too, it's eighty six, so it'll. Next year when eighth grade, cause it's eighth grade is small too, it's eighty six, so it'll go off and have two in the small grades at the same time. So we will see lower enrollment.
I would just say like our percent of yeah, student interaction dips at all rather than just maybe a whole number because of those bubbles.
Next, we're booster club and district sponsorship discussion. This is kind of a continuing discussion, but I mean, it's developed some over the last, you know, each of our last few meetings, we've had some kind of conversation for it. Um, I think we left last, um, ECC meeting where we have some groups, booster groups, teams going out and soliciting some sponsorships. And where we will have to come to kind of an agreement on if, unless it is a direct team sponsorship, it's something on the team handles. We'll, we'll have to come down to like, what is a percent? What's the share? The revenue share for district to go for, what goes directly to the team? Um, so let's see, I'm super dug out. He has, he had some paperwork and language, but that was best just in a discussion, so we'll soft and put it in. Just made a couple of copies here.
Wow. So this is a campaign that we started, um, back in twenty eleven. You know, like garden spot, uh, there's the assistant AD back then at that point and the athletic director. We, uh, we were going, the most school districts in that time, they've been looking at different ways to kind of increase funding, increase revenue for extracurricular programs. And this is a marketing campaign that we came up with and, um, we used the entire time until I left there at Garden Spot in seventeen eighteen school year. I'm exactly sure if they're still using this campaign still, but actually the basis was to get the booster clubs, uh, involved in soliciting, uh, sponsorships for signage in, uh, some of the athletic facilities there. We used our stadium and also our high school gymnasium. Um, and there's some of the places that we used at the time, on the second page there is kind of short form agreement that we had in place. Uh, five hundred dollars for the stadium sign, eight hundred dollars for, uh, the high school gymnasium and then a combo fee in there. And then the cost of the signage would come out of, uh, would be paid for by athletics from their revenue sharing part of it. What it was, a booster club would go out, solicit the sponsorship and then it would be a fifty fifty split. Say they, they sold a five hundred dollar sign, um, the booster club representative or uh, they would get fifty percent, you go to the directly to the booster club, fifty percent would go directly towards athletics. And, uh, we kept a, like a, like a Google sheet to kind of mark down who made contact, what business made contact, what their answer was. Um, some businesses out there were very particular about which booster club they run and kind of their, their revenue sharing to go to. So they've kind of reached out on their own to some of the local community members that they knew about that. But in this graph here, you can see the total amount of revenue that was made every single year that we did it. And again, they had fifty fifty split, the athletics revenue was a little bit lower than the boosters revenue because we took the cost of the signage out of the athletics portion of it. But you can see that over, you know, those seven years, the, uh, booster clubs combined down at Garden Spot made almost seventy three thousand dollars while the athletic department got over sixty six thousand dollars in that seven year span. So it was a pretty successful campaign, you know, had some revenue that, that wasn't there before and was able to kind of provide some extra resources throughout the school district. So figured dust this off, bring it out and just kind of have it up here for, for discussion and maybe it's not something like this that's used here, but maybe it kind of devolves into something else that maybe might fit a little bit more here for Kutztown.
I mean, anything that could help bring more money in, you know, is, is a big help. And I do think that some of these booster clubs should be kind of helping out a lot considering the support that we're given, some of these athletic programs. You know, it's tremendous on our side and, you know, some of these, but I've had, you know, like we talked about the last one about some of the smaller supports could maybe combining and having one booster club. I don't know if we dipped into that yet or not at all.
Not particularly. No, we had, I know Brandyline has a, they have an all support booster club, um, but there's, there's different kind of avenues to take with that. There are plus and minuses with the refund.
And I, I, I think what is kind of nice about having the boosters do this is that it's not taking away the school resources from doing school work, which is, I mean, we're becoming increasingly dependent on you know, lower and lower resources to do school jobs. And to not have to have our administrator or, or athletic director have to go out and try to market or, you know, some banner campaigning or something like that. I think if the boosters could do that, I think this kind of idea is is nice because the booster clubs are, at least in Kutztown, we have so many of them, they probably know almost are connected in some way to almost every single business in the school district. So they are likely able to maybe just talk to a friend who owns a business and say, hey, football booster program is looking for somebody to sponsor a banner like out of the stadium for X amount of money. Would you be willing to do that? And, uh, I think making that happen is probably going to be much easier for the booster clubs. I think something along this line, it kind of makes sense in terms of the the effort from the school district, like the benefit is going to be very minimal. The booster could like, it could make the connections much, much easier. As long as I guess it doesn't impede upon the school district's kind of bigger like marketing campaigns where we're trying to raise bigger uh, pots of money for like naming rights of the stadium and those kinds of things where I think the district needs to be more involved maybe than a booster because we're doing for some, some more major commercial signage like at the stadium or inside of the school board, that might be a five year commitment or something like that, whereas this is year to year, so.
I mean, I do think that's an important part of what we, whatever we do put in writing is what is eligible for boosters to go out and for what they are, what they are not. Um, you know, I think and there's a balance, like we want boosters to have that autonomy because like I said, they have, um, a lot of power behind them, you know, to improve folks to do that, but there's probably a few key pieces, meaning rights that we might, you know. I, I think as I talked through, like we wouldn't want to, for them to find it type of sponsor, we might need to reduce the, the percentage, just might have to go down if it's that type of sponsor. That we run rather, you know, you get fifty percent of the sign, great.
But you take this idea, combine some percentages into the corporate sponsorship that we've already approved and put it together and
definitely see what happens.
And there's going to be discussions, you know, on those big ones where they're, they're the boosters, actual stuff is going to be getting to just a U or a, or a bigger one, but the courage that first, that first step is a bigger step.
Right. So we'll put it together, um, but I think start with the smaller end fifty percent and work, you know, work our way up to the lower percentages.
So that brings it to the question, now we have all those signs in the stadium, how long have those were those installed? When was the last time that there was any?
Uh, mostly, there was one that was re-upped like just over a year ago, because it was over the summer, I think last year, it was right before we had um, for the sponsorship programs approved, that was a redo.
Just think that's, we have to look at all of those out there. I think, I think overwhelmingly a lot of them have.
Yeah.
And I'm starting to get them onto this, on this program.
Cause these banners seem like more of a year to year kind of thing, maybe not as expensive as a big sign, probably more of kind of what we see when we have like the senior banners out there, maybe not that small, but assuming it's going to be something along those lines. In terms of these like temporary banners, not gigantic signs that we're, we're going to be hanging up. At least for this booster kind of marketing campaign.
Well, the ones on the stadium, these are like three by five on the, on the fence, all the way across the way everyone's soccer benches are.
Somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. That's the same size that they have up at the park too. Yeah, I think like four by six.
Yeah, I think we have. Yeah, yeah, definitely something to work on.
I think that there could be an opportunity as well to really engage students, uh, to be able to make some of the outreach. Um, you know, some of our high school students could probably benefit from, um, the preparation and, and skill of picking up a phone call or stopping by, um, and, and helping to make that ask. So I don't know if there's, um, you know, a, a class or a club opportunity, um, within, within the high school that this might be a, a possible activity that they could consider that would have educational value in addition to financial support for the school.
Great idea. Um, we have the, I remember if you recall newly formed FBLA last year. Um, and any of the classes in that business realm, Mr. Simmons leads, so we can have a conversation with him and see, um, see how we can get some students involved.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, we have one middle school, Preston's middle, it's already been out knocking on doors for a rest like girl, baby. Second grader out there tries to find sponsorships.
Sorry to say no to a twelve year old. Um, just curious, do we know roughly how many booster clubs we have? Is it probably just one for each of the major sports and then the music association? I can't, I mean, I apologize, I don't know. I imagine it's like soccer, soccer's probably combined like boys and girls or is?
Boys, boys and girls are separate, boys and girls are separate.
Okay.
Uh, trying to think it's from sports that do not have one.
Well, golf doesn't have one.
Golf does not. Tennis is, uh, also Eastern Works Tennis Association, they do a lot of fundraising through that, they have to pay back to, uh, to the tennis team.
You'll talk to me through Brandyline.
Correct, yeah, yes. But boys volleyball, a small one, and you have a concession stand and that goes towards.
And then, um, the kind of a question, a little bit of, you know, whether the president of your association is a booster club or if it's its own organization, um, just to gather some more information on the, what that kind of categorize that because it seems to fall somewhere in between.
Yeah. And again, I think like, as long as I, I have you say this, as long as they're not like, uh, sort of looking for, like stepping on each other, trying to, to get, you know, sponsorships from the same people. Yeah, that, that's probably the biggest thing. I think we need to be worried about going after the same, you know.
It's, it's frustrating the sponsors. I mean, they always get hit up all the time, that's some of the conversation and it's, uh, they just, they love, they enjoy receiving their requests because many of them are very small things, get it to take care of in the moment, but comes to bigger monetary donations, I think they're unifying that voice and, and had shared, just keeping a shared document that everybody has access to the knowledge. Cause they also, the other side is, you know, we don't want any turf disputes or
Especially when they're using the same.
So, yeah, yes. So any kind of like way to formalize, just to say like, so and so already got sponsorship from.
Next, we're moving on to facilities and looking at the major mechanicals review.
Yeah, I just want to, Dr. Myers, could you bring up that, uh, first one that I put on there? Is that the major mechanicals? I, I sent them something.
Is it this one?
Uh, that's the second one, but.
I shared, that's, I shared that document with everybody on the committee just.
The first one, I just wanted to, how I established some of those numbers and with that chart is from ASHRAD, which is the, uh, American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, Air Conditioning Engineers. That, you know, a lot of our stuff inside the buildings, that's their recommendations on replacement life expectancy, as well as the mother trade groups. You know, of what item should be lasting. So, yeah, that document there is, uh, as much as we can go back, as I know, I have a lot of question marks in there or some question marks based on, I'm not sure when the sidewalks were done or the paving of certain buildings were done. So that's just a kind of a snapshot in color. Kind of shows of where we are with green, uh, you know, getting yellow where questionable and then redding, red is when it's should be replaced or when it's going ahead of that. Now, obviously some things on this are, uh, have been replaced already. There are certain things that, uh, are have failed prior to the red zone. And there's things that are still going that are currently in the red zone. So again, that's just a, a number to snapshot to kind of look at of where we are. So anybody have any questions on those?
What are our team use?
Rooftop, rooftop units. We did those three, four years ago now, we just did rooftop units and the chillers at the two elementary schools and, uh, the middle school. And then now in the middle school this year, we're doing the inside units, you know, that's, uh, certain things. And again, down at the bottom, I have, you know, vehicles and stuff and that's based on a tenure and that's and we see more rust on a lot of our stuff than, and it's not the mileage.
Like flooring, ceilings, it's kind of hard to know, like was it original with the building or, yeah.
And it's, uh, renovation. You know, again, that's trade recommendation, but also PDE in the past. Uh, I guess just about ten years ago, they did away with a program that was called PlanCon. And PlanCon was basically based on a twenty to twenty five year cycle of redoing your buildings at that rate. So it kind of, kind of puts you in the same thing. I believe Kutztown Elementary, Max Tony, Albany Middle School were all done in year two thousand. Yeah, yeah, ninety nine to two thousand, they were, they were all done at, at that period of time. So that was a lot of work all going on. And that was multiple vendors as well, which you kind of can see that.
Yeah.
You know, it's very challenging to get the same vendor to be able to do five, six buildings at once.
Two thousand seems like that wasn't that long ago.
It doesn't, yeah, it was twenty five years ago. So a lot of those things are based on twenty five years, but.
I mean, I do think we do, I mean, and you really see it at the beginning of the school year, but, um, I think our maintenance on, and all of our buildings is exceptional because when you come into school, those, I know I'm going to say it's not kept up during the school year because it is, but coming into the school buildings, like at the beginning of school year, it's like, wow, everything looks brand new, like it. Hopefully that helps stretch some of these out as long as we can though.
And all what were a little bit different, many, you know, again, some of the small, uh, units at Kusten Elementary, you know, recently some of the valves are, you know, starting to fail, you know, coming on, we're right in the shoulder season that we're starting to, sometimes you need heat in the morning and then cooling in the afternoon. Which, uh, you know, that's when you kind of find some of your problems. For whatever reason, Kusten Elementary, the flooring shows a lot more wear, like a lot of cracking on the vinyl floor than any other building for some reason. And it was again, done the same as the other buildings. So I don't know if that was a, again, the vendor who did it, the floor of the sub base underneath, but you know, just things like that. Now that doesn't not really impacting, but it's, you can see, you can see.
Is there anything here that jumps out to you that says like, this, these things have to be prioritized because you feel like like they're over, like well overdue for replacements?
We're struggling with, or shouldn't say struggle, a lot of, a lot of work is going into both uh, Kusten Elementary and here at the high school with a lot of the classroom units. And the classroom units at the high school, we are much newer, but we seem to have a lot of issues with the classroom heating and cooling. Kusten Elementary is probably right now, that's our, we spend the most time there on, on those, but.
You're just as old, they have another issues.
It's, it's like almost a tired, just an animal. Again, could have been a vendor, they do have different, slightly different products. Again, doing the same thing, but slightly different product.
Different contractors, different materials and.
So and I bet you our, Kusten Elementary is once, once a day, maybe every other day, depending on, hey, it just a little warmer, it's getting a little warmer, so you gotta go and make an adjustment. Look like that. We haven't had any busted, uh, pipes at all, but. Busted uh pipes at all, but. Okay, the cleanliness, that's the custodians, and spend a lot of time in the summer making that, making that really look, look good. They spend a lot of. Hot hours.
Go to the replacement of those kind of big items that that Cushtown Elementary, maybe namely. Is that where, like, are doing that whole facility scope and and building usage and. Kind of mapping out what we're gonna do with those, but that's where that comes in. Because it's hard to do anything until the school makes a decision or the board makes a decision on how we're gonna move forward with the building usage.
Yeah, and related, related to that, um you know, we, as we know, you know, it's actually a year ago, I think, this week where we would have. Approved the bond issue, you know, so that we were able to do the work at Cushtown Elementary School and still have money for some of that necessary. In the future, items that either other elementary buildings will be also today filed an application for our cap, which is a. Construction grant program through the state that we've talked about a few times, so that was filed today, looking um at at a version of those projects as well. Uh as. And we will reach a point where all those decisions on how we address these systems come, um and. If we have received significantly grant funding, might be time to make a decision, and yeah, so. In the meantime, yeah, we are fortunate that even with aging facilities that look great, they function great. People work hard to keep them that way, but. We're in good shape considering our, you know, all things considered. And then, again, some of the repairs are. Hundreds of dollars, some are thousands of dollars, you know. It leans more towards, here at the high school, we're in the thousands of dollars. And Cushtown Elementary is more than hundreds of dollars, but it's just because the older equipment, you know, more basic of parts.
And so hard to source things that are like twenty-five years old or not so much?
Not so much, again, believe it or not, here at the high school, they're harder to get, these parts are harder to get. It's a different brand, uh again, I don't know who recommended this brand, uh the units that are going in at the middle school. Are completely different brand, US made. A lot of more parts available, and that's from multiple vendors telling me, you know, that that's a good unit, that's just not, that's just not the core putting in there. That's other vendors telling me, yeah, that's a, that's a unit that's used. Uh a lot of it, I don't think any other person that I've spoken to is familiar with the units here at this high school. Working good, when they work, they work good, right?
Any other comments, questions? That, uh we'll move on to the fuel station.
So we're revisiting uh this, uh Dr. Mars, you had the other sheet there. I had again quotes from Hayford Petroleum, Western Global. Petroleum, uh PWI and Diesel Direct. Hayford Petroleum again came out, visited, it still did not provide a quote. Multiple times, they didn't provide a quote in twenty twenty-three, even though they just never sent it. Western Global, uh they have a standalone tank with a solar powered option pump. And they came in at thirteen thousand four forty-nine. Uh when I asked them about getting some type of software, so we could use some type of uh key tag, whatever, so we could track any type of tracking. That's when they put me in contact with PWI. PWI's uh quote of. Twenty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and three cents. Uh is the standalone tank, solar powered pump, as well as with the car tracking system and remote. Level indicator, so they would, they could potentially hook up that to our, whatever supplier we have. Diesel Direct, who we looked at before, even though Diesel Direct, they provide all types of fuels. Uh they do not sell tanks, they only rent, that's who the BCIU had been using on uh different occasions. Uh they're two hundred a month. If you want to add the tracking, fuel tracking software, it uh additional three, three ninety-nine a month. And then you have to uh. Purchase the fuel through them, and their, their fuel rate was uh two forty-eight a gallon. Again, I don't know, I have to go any further.
I'm saying compared to what's BCI use.
Well, that's what I was gonna get into, so. We were looking at if, depending on BCI use, BCI use flow comes in. Depending on the amount of fuel you're predicting to use throughout the year. And the delivery. So. The transport. Is seventy-two hundred gallons or more last year was. Two dollars and four, two dollars and fifteen cents a gallon. Our, our price would have been two seventies, two seventy-eight a gallon. Because we're, we're looking under, under, under seven thousand, and that's it, one shot. Uh I just spoke to a contact at the BCIU, and they're now at one eighty-two a gallon. Again, that's quite a bit, we, we can't get there because of the quantity, so what? In discussion, my question back to them was, will they be willing to sell fuel to us? At a rate, or at least, you know, maybe a slight markup, because that's still under, you know, I'm hoping under two dollars again. Uh so depending on that, we were looking at potential cost savings. At the, on the hot, on the low end of cost savings is uh. Two thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars per year. And on the high end, if, if they sold it at, let's say that they sell to us with zero markup. We're a little bit over six thousand gallons, a six thousand dollars a year of savings.
So we purchase fuel from them to refill our fuel tank or tanks that we have here?
We would put, my, my, again, my thought is that we purchase the tank because that's something we, we needed. BCIU would put fuel in our tank. They would use it.
Yep.
And then we would use it as well, and would track it, and then we would be charged for the fuel that we use. That's, I thought, I was trying to say, because they get that quantity discount of fuel.
Right.
Okay, so this still needs to go through them, asking Rob Rosenberg. If uh if if that, you know, they, they think that should be no problem with us, they were just trying to come up with, what price would they be? Yeah. But again, it's, you know, trying to do a payback of, I mean, that's, the tank was just. Twenty-five thousand, we still need to put it on something, so whether we put it on concrete slab or. You know, or, or, you know, do we do stone, you know, we can potentially dig it out ourselves. Roughly five hundred dollars of stone. Well, that's another thing that we have to look at, and we were looking at potential two locations. If you can imagine the loading dock at the middle school, right at that corner, it's kind of. A little bit down from the commons entrance. Or just around that corner uh on this side. Where the line where the buses are, kind of jet out of the parking lot. Both of those locations would stop traffic potentially if you parked and fueled a vehicle. Not a problem for us, because we can fuel anytime of the day, and it's important, it's a challenge for them. Right now, BCIU is driving each one of these buses to their lot on sixty-one to fuel.
I was just gonna ask where they currently refuel, I'm surprised they don't have a small fuel truck.
Uh I think it's cost, again. You know, they don't, they don't necessarily, they were using Diesel Direct, but again, a lot, lot higher pricing. So right now, they're paying drivers to drive, drive there, and, you know, again, and the fuel that it's using to get there. They feel that they'll have to fuel uh their, fuel once a week, something like that, they'll, they're anticipating their, the way their uh buses are running. Uh they're, right now, they're.
Once a week if we have something here.
We, yes, I mean, they're, I guess, once a week here, they're not fueling every single vehicle, every single day. Uh their fleet right now is a mix of gasoline and diesel vehicles, their goal is to have everything. Uh to gasoline by, two, by twenty-seven, something around there. No, no, we would still, we would still be able to, you know, have a delivery of fuel once a week.
But what if, we have a mix of gas and diesel?
They would still do their diesel on their own until they, until they get everything switched over. They feel that they're close to the sub seven hundred a week, seven hundred gallons a week that they would potentially.
We also save time by not going to rudders. People, it's like, you know, to, to me, for another guy, the question is, what cost? We, we will make back the cost over time, because how, how long are we willing to save that that takes? You know, is it five years? Is that worth it? You know, what's the life, what's the life of the tank?
Well, yeah, yeah, how do you, how do you take care of it?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen, I've seen farm tanks that are fifty years old and they're still being used, and those are farm tanks.
Even with that diagram there, I, I don't know if that's. At, you know, the current usage, but. That's about seven thousand seventy-five hundred dollars a year in savings as opposed to going out to rudders to refuel now. Now, I don't know if that's, that's not where all the buses are going, but.
That was me doing that live in the document, and it took our twenty twenty-five usage and at those two rates. You know, we, I would anticipate save a little less than that, for whatever reason, but for our project, we're just. To be conservative, but you're still looking at over, you know, well, it depends on all those prices, so we're looking at. Uh concrete slab plus, we would want a car to here, of course, in that system, so we're looking at thirty-five thousand, so it would take five years to. To save my money. Uh the other thing with, if we did, uh again, just thinking about the future. If we did stone, you know, stone pad, we have the option to move this tank, because that, that tank is solar powered standalone, we don't have to run electric to it. We don't have additional cost for electric, uh what we don't have is a canopy over top of it, so. I meant the weather, you know, you gotta deal with that. But we could potentially move it, this is something that's not, you know, in the ground or set up or like that. So.
This is just gasoline.
Yes, gasoline, yes, just gasoline.
I mean, if we do the, if, like, I just did a quick number on North Park Rental, and for five years with those two numbers, that's almost thirty-six thousand dollars, so that's.
Yeah, oh, yeah. No, that's mostly for job sites, but they offered it, you know, that's what I call it.
Can you just look at this as a long-term investment, and I think it kind of helps make sense of it pretty quickly.
But where, so, is the borough going to approve us putting this in, and what do we have to do for? This fill response, because if we put it on top of stone and it leaks, it's no longer contained.
From what I, I did check with the borough, and this is, this is uh under a thousand gallons, a thousand and one gallons, the rule, the regulations go and change. As far as that, and also, this is quote a, a, what? Double wall tank, which goes you a little bit different on those lines, but Borough does not have any specific rules, you still have to register a tank. But not with the borough, it's with the state.
Does this also fall under the uh weight set measures Bureau then?
No, because we're not reselling.
So Richard, are you leaning towards stone? Like area, be in case we have to move it somewhere different?
Well, obviously, when you go to concrete, you're, you're a little bit more, well, you're not locked, but you're committed, I mean, you have a cement head, that's. How many square feet that we don't have to mow again. If, if we do move it, but it's, you know, it's another thing, so we want to be sure it's where we want. You know, I'm sure we can do a couple mockups of what it looks like, you know, with, with vehicles, the fuel, they said the vans and and maintenance vehicles, nothing to worry about. Uh my initial thought was to actually have it here behind the high school, down, down below, uh you know.
Just getting the buses back there, it seems like.
Buses would, buses are a challenge. You know, there's some other, other issues there. Because you would potentially like make a circle there, we have like a T, but not a circle, you know, to have, you know, allow the true island. But, you know, we came up with a better suggestion, I mean, um. We were kind of going through a bunch of different scenarios of where we could have it. Uh and those are two locations we came up with that are up there, that aren't a problem for us, it would potentially work for them. You know, if they fuel a couple buses a day, you know.
It's so much easier if it's right there.
Right, you know, and they might have buses fueled, you know, probably recommend that they fuel on their uh their morning, after their morning run. So, right, students are already in, students are in, traffic is low, that would be potentially uh what we'd look at.
I mean, the thing we could always do is just do a stone option for now, just dig a little deeper, and then if we want to go concrete, we can, we have some of the stone. Go right over top of it. I, I think that might be the better.
And the tank is that easily movable?
Sure, well, it might depend on the size of a thousand gallon tank, that's gonna be, uh you know, a fairly large thing that we might have to cover rigor. Somebody with, you know, a larger. Yeah, grain or pork. What the weight of that is.
There. Like, like, do we have to have a fence around this thing? Is there like liability issues with it being like right next to the school, or we don't really? These things, you know.
Guess we'd have to, guess we should check with our insurance company. Yeah, yeah, Mrs. Seiten, I can look into that. I mean, this, this unit that we're looking at is a, a one that's supposedly be able to leave out on a job site.
I think there's more around, and you just don't know where they exist.
So they have them at the Rama though.
Yeah.
That they're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other point of all ones, yeah.
I think lots of local businesses have, but we just. The insurance company did make a couple of small barricades.
You don't want anybody to be able to drive inside, so you'll need like this.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing to look into, see the insurance, but say.
We could purchase some.
Quick, I guess, schedule for you later.
Well, again, putting bollards in isn't bad, but then if you do move it, kind of those things.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for what, like two years?
We looked at twenty-three, and again, on that sheet.
I'm sure it hasn't gotten cheaper in the last two years.
Uh it, it went up, but not as much as I would have thought. The rentals stay the same.
I mean, now that we have our, we don't have our own buses, but now that we. Have our own buses kind of here, seems like this is a decision to make.
And we can take advantage of that pricing.
Yes, yeah.
Then that fuel can be used for like the lawnmowers.
Well, that's, that's all included in our number, uh so that's the food truck.
Vans.
You know, all our vans and maintenance vehicles, lawnmowers, everything.
People are driving out to rudders, I guess, essentially, that are dirty hill or something.
And uh Mrs. Seiten, from the accounting side, there's one thing, if we did this purchase, we would not have to, there's something that. We have to eliminate the tax, what was the tax?
Oh, right, so. We would, you have to get this fuel. Um without paying the, the fuel's tax, currently, we go down to the rudders or another gas station and pay the fuel tax. And then we have to apply to get it refunded, so we do a liquid fuels tax refund. And eliminate that paperwork.
So as far as next steps, again, we've talked about this a couple of times over two years, I mean, I guess I would ask, the committee's comfortable with, and Richard put together the whole scope of it. And maybe staying in touch with Jeremiah just about location conversation, if that's still something we need to. You want to see it again, we have everything together, or just send it back to the full board, for instance?
I'd say we can go to the full board, yeah. Yeah, so as long as the insurance is.
Well, I would say we'll take.
Looks like it has like four flip things there that you could pick it up. Stuff like square or cubes are more difficult to hold pressure, but I guess they're not really holding pressure, it's not propane, it's liquid gas.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, further down, we want to put a can of beer, you just. Do one, quick and easy too.
If we have a light pole on the bottom, it's taking itself back as well. They pull.
As it snowed the past couple of years.
That new she said it's almost December, now you're saying it's snowing.
Okay, uh well, I guess look for a motion to move it to the full board with those questions answered later on, then moved. And all in favor, say aye. Probably not till what October, I will say.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so next is the middle school HVAC update.
We have all but one of the units installed. That last unit is scheduled to arrive this Thursday, and they're planning already to install that on Friday, that was a factory delay. That was coming, that's for the split unit, that's for the band room, it actually is, you know, it's just like a mini split, but it's not many, yeah, so it's. Got the uh, the unit up on the roof, and then the other unit is down in the one mechanical room. Uh we plan on doing that during the day on Friday, it's uh. Still over the admin office, so we're gonna evacuate those areas when we're using the crane to get that on there, that was our plan to do that, so be. Zero disruption to the students, but then we gotta. Well, yeah, also. Right, yeah.
That's right to the time, yeah.
Yeah, so that actually points out.
That's next Thursday, that's right, twenty sixth.
Should be, should be, or what do you say, nine o'clock? I think we told them not to block that, we could, we could be there. Or booking something else for next Friday, so that's why. So that'll be happening, and again, the uh, the work is in the mechanical room and on the roof, so we get no disruption to, to students for that. Uh we have a small punch list for, for the carpenters, which McFlor has a company called Winners Construction. That they're working on, again, waiting until this last unit goes in to really wrap them up, to get them back here. Josh Controls is working on building the homepage and integrating the uh, the graphics for the whole project, and even though. It's the same building, they have to integrate every single one of these units that's into the uh control system. That we see. So they're working on that now, and they're in the building. That's so the head custodian can see his whole building running, and then you go to the first floor. You see there's all question marks, so nothing is hooked up now, it's remote, so that's how the head custodian can see it all.
So does a head custodian kind of control the overall system, and individual classroom instructors have. Like a li- limited control over like a couple degrees of it.
We can set it whatever we may, would like, uh still, because of this is a, an Esco project, the entered GISA guaranteed energy savings. There's certain numbers that they have to set these things at, uh and to allow a little bit of control. So we can get that in guarantee, guaranteed, guaranteed energy. Uh but we, we have control to make some adjustments, it's really just for the. Head custodian to look at that building and make sure everything is within the range, he shouldn't be. Making any changes, you know, uh to really the build, but that shows exhaust fans, uh and then. You know, the temperature and some other things going on each room, so Josh Control has to build. What they call building that, and that's on computer, and they go and, and build that whole system up, so.
This, does this do a tracking or energy usage during, you know, compared from the daytime to the night time?
This does not, no, that software does not, this is strictly the operation of the units. I believe McFlor does that through our. Seeing the, the bills, I believe we, we've gone through with the, seeing the, the bills from, from uh, it's down. Our department, and my gas. Uh there, one, we're working through that, there was a firmware update between some of the units that came in and. Came in a different phase, phases, so we're still working on a, a firmware update. Through the vendor. So we're forward getting that done through the vendor, who was uh again, Bodan.
Overall impression of that project, and it was run well and did a good job.
I think they did an extremely good job, it's the uh, the struggles, the last bit of called commissioning. Getting out the running, and they just discovered this firmware update that happened, so it was a little bit there at the end that we're struggling, but. We're working through it.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the, it's, I know, again, we live there, like, so some of the backend controls, the firmware update and. You come in the morning and it doesn't think your room's occupied, cause it just kicked it off schedule, as soon as you press the occupied button, it's like, it's almost instant. How quickly it takes to humidity out. It's impressive, it shows the impressiveness of the system, how quickly it can work once those are there.
I will say that, that, you know, again, the uh. Instantaneous, you know, we used to have, some people requested their room get started up. You know, hours ahead of time, because it just was so slow to react, literally take an hour, hour and a half to get your room comfortable, you know, when we. Whether it was in the summertime or the, or the uh winter time, you know, when too cold or too warm, and these things do.
It was, it was like five.
I was gonna say.
Like it just handles that much air, like that volume.
It's a distribution really with that, you know, elevated trunk up top, the way the air is going over top, and I, I think it really.
Yeah, they were talking like, uh went from like seventy seven point five to seventy two. Good to hear. That's it, let's uh look for a motion for a German.